Good evening. Today is Tuesday, July, today is Wednesday, July 5th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberating the justice of all.
Heather, would you please take roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have done citizens' comments on agenda-related items. Consent agenda, all.
I think you had one.
You gonna stand? Bob?
Are you?
Were you gonna stand? Sorry.
I didn't hear what you said earlier.
Oh, it's citizens' comments.
It is citizens', okay, good. My name is Bob Ogilvy. I represent Salt City Rock and Blues. I'm here to ask the council to approve the feasibility study that, I think it's Agenda Item C. Salt City Rock and Blues has been involved putting on concerts for, this will be our 11th year. For this study, we've donated $12,000 for the feasibility study. And we're prepared to perhaps even donate more after Labor Fest perhaps, but right now our funds are tied up producing that. So that's all I really wanted to say is that I would like to have the council vote in favor of that and move the amphitheater project forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda, all items marked with an asterisk on the consent agenda are considered to be city mana- considered by the city manager to be routine manners. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses. Consideration of International Overdose Awareness Day event to be held at the Manistee City Marina on Thursday, August 31st, 2023. At this time, council can take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
That's second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of purchasing a John Deere tractor loader. The Public Works Department has been leasing a track loader, skid steer, for the past five years on an annual basis. Machines are no longer available to be leased based on industry demand. The fiscal year 2024 motor pool budget includes $80,000 for the purchase of a new track loader. John Deere currently holds the MIDL contract with the state of Michigan and has quoted the city $71,399.30. At this time, council can take action to approve purchase of a John Deere compact track loader 325G2. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Since we've leased that in the past, how, like, what's the life expectancy on a piece of equipment like that?
This is probably in the 15 to 20-year range. When we were leasing them, the total cost annually was just over $1,600 bucks. Got about 180 hours of usage. So when we calculated that out, that was a, if we kept leasing it, we could do that for 40 years and still save money. Unfortunately, that program's not available to us now.
Can't you purchase the one that you've been leasing at a cheaper price?
They actually came to First Street Beach last spring, one week after they delivered it, and took it from the operator. Because it was already sold to somebody else.
Okay.
So it would have if we could have.
Okay.
Any else? Heather, would you please take roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Renaissance Park Lot Number 12 requests to sell half the lot. The owners of Renaissance Park Lot 12 requested to have their parcel split into two 3.26-acre parcels. Manistee Township approved this request. The owner's intentions are to fulfill their original plans to build and employ six to 10 people on one parcel and sell the other. The final sale of the parcel would be subject to council approval and the new owners would be subject to Renaissance Park protective covenants. At this time, council can take action to approve the Renaissance Park Lot Number 12 owner's request to sell half the lot. Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Have you ever done this before? Just had down that small, I mean, doesn't really invite a lot of development, a three-acre, does it?
So I'm not aware of a lot split before. George, so it's a, yeah, they wanted to make two 3.26-acre parcels and sell one. Their plan was to use some of the revenue to help fund the project as well.
Is there already someone interested in buying it?
They had an interested party. I don't know if it's, that's gonna move forward, but.
I have a question. How much did we sell it, Lot 12, to begin with?
I believe it was, I could double check, I believe it was $19,500 or it was $22,000. I'll check.
And Bachman, to answer your question, when the city laid out those lots, they were laid out as minimum of five-acre lots, which are very large, can handle a very large industrial complex. But they were purposely oversized to keep some wooded space and allow that place to kind of hide the industrial nature of it and keep it looking more natural. So a smaller lot, certainly you can put an industry on that.
Question with the smaller lot, are they gonna need an easement or anything created? Or will they have access if they split that?
I don't, I didn't see the split document, but they should have access from the public road. And actually, one of the positive things would be another utility customer of ours if it's split.
Am I correct, they've done nothing with that lot yet, have they? Haven't done any improvement to the lot at all?
They have not.
And they have somebody wanna, they have a deal on it to somebody else, or how much that's worth?
They did have an interested party. I don't know that, I don't know that that's going forward, but. So the idea was we'd get this initial approval if council would allow it. The final sale would still come before council if, when that happens.
I got a question. So if you split it into 3.6 or 3.26 acres, isn't, doesn't it say in the covenants that it has to be a minimum of five to build on? I can't remember if it was a minimum of five acres.
We have the protective covenants. We can take a look. George says he doesn't remember that, but we could take a look.
I guess it doesn't matter because the township approved it, right? I mean.
Yeah, the township, and, and let me just offer this, but first say that the applicant on this is being represented in an unrelated matter by my office in Grand Rapids, just so you know on that. Yes, the township, under its subdivision control ordinance, is required to approve all splits of a planted lot, just like we would in the city. Of course, this isn't in the city, so that part of it does not require our approval. But under the covenants, we do, are required to approve any type of sale that.
Okay. So my thought on this, just as if we split it, then everybody else is gonna wanna split theirs and then we got a mess out there, so that's.
I'd feel better if he'd done something with his own half.
Yeah.
I mean, if he'd improved it and showed he had it done, then wanted to bring something else, a companion business that was complementary to what he was doing, I'd feel better, but just, I don't know. I would be reluctant at best.
So if we vote, if we voted no on this, he could bring it back sometime in the future when he builds on it, right? And actually has a buyer for the other piece? Can he do that, or?
Are you asking if the council would approve the final sale?
No, I'm saying if we, if we said no to this right now, him splitting it the way that it is, and then he came back like a year and a half later, and he's got his business up and going and saying, hey, now I actually have a legitimate buyer for the other side, could he do that, bring it back again?
He certainly could. I think that he'd be reluctant, though, if the indication initially by council is, you know, we're not approving this. I think it'd be hard-pressed to find a realtor that would wanna sell it for him, knowing that.
Well, it would be different if he had his business going and he had a.
Yeah.
An interested party on the other side, instead of it just sitting there and now it's split in two again. So that's just the way that I'm, okay.
Yeah, I, my gut feeling is if he hasn't developed his part of the property, I don't like the idea of him selling half of it and making a profit off of something we sold him. So I, that's why I'm interested in what we sold it to him to begin with, because I'm, I don't want him to not develop his property. I want him to develop it. But if he's just gonna sell half of it to somebody else and then walk away, I don't feel very comfortable with this at all right now.
Didn't he say that he was gonna try to use this to help develop his portion of his estate?
That was his statement, yes.
Anybody else? Heather, could you please take roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Reluctantly, yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
No.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
No.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing an agreement with Hunden Strategic Partners for a beach amphitheater market and feasibility study. The City of Manistee requested proposals from qualified firms to perform a market and feasibility analysis for the beach amphitheater project. Two firms responded and the amphitheater project committee reviewed the proposals, interviewed both firms, and now is recommending Hunden Strategic Partners be awarded the contract. At this time, council could take action to approve the agreement with Hunden Strategic Partners for the beach amphitheater market and feasibility study authorized the city manager to execute this agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Any discussion?
I have a question. So the gentleman from Salt City had mentioned that they had donated $12,000 towards us, which was really nice. I guess I'm just wondering how much is the total cost of the study?
It's $32,000. We also budgeted $20,000 ARPA monies for the remainder.
And is this something where if the amphitheater doesn't go through this time, can we keep that study? Or are we gonna have to continue to like do a new study each time we go to do a bid or a grant? Do you know what I mean?
So it's just, it's one, and so we had, maybe if we pull up some of the renderings, it's, what the study's gonna help determine is the right size for the amphitheater. So it's actually gonna help us have more solid data for a grant proposal.
But if we didn't get the grant we were going for the first time, or the intended grant, we could take this study and use it for other grants?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Any else? Heather, would you please take roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
I've got so many questions in my mind about this, I'm gonna have to just say no.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
No.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Compensation Commission, Harbor Commission, Housing Commission, Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, Peg Commission, Tree Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Mayor and manager appointments required motion second, and council voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives the majority support. The following applications have received. Harbor Commission, two vacancies, one term ending 10/31/23 and one term ending 10/31/25. Purpose Advisory of Marina and Harbor Development Issues Council Appointment. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Wesley Smith from 273rd.
Support.
Support.
To which term?
I guess the term ending 10/31/25.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Roll, sorry.
As I call your name, please read the last name of the person for whom you are voting. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
State the last name of the person for whom you are voting. Smith? Smith?
Yeah.
Councilmember, Councilmember Beaton.
Smith.
Mayor Sullivan.
Smith.
Councilmember Pratt.
Smith.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Smith.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Smith.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, one vacancy term ending 4/30/25. Purpose identifying research and recommended opportunities and resources to help prevent, remediate and eliminate blight and help beautify the City of Manistee. Council Appointment. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Jess Stallings from 324 Sixth Street.
Anybody else?
Support for the term.
Heather, would you please take roll?
Again, please state the last name of the person for whom you are voting. Councilmember Bachman.
Stallings, yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Stallings.
Mayor Sullivan.
Stallings.
Councilmember Pratt.
Stallings.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Stallings.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Stallings.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. Peg Commission, one vacancy term ending 12/31/23. Purpose oversee operations of Manistee Public Access. Council Appointment. Is there a nomination?
I'll nominate Ellen Gorman, 406 Third Street.
Support.
Thank you. Heather, would you please take roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Gorman.
Mayor Sullivan.
Gorman.
Councilmember Pratt.
Gorman.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Gorman.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Gorman.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, and areas of city involvement. Limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Anybody? Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the DPW Police Department and Fire Department for all their work during Forest Festival this weekend. It was a busy weekend. We had some great weather, so it was nice to see everyone here and appreciate everyone's hard work on that. I also spoke with Mark Sakaki of the Housing Commission. I got a report about trees in the channel. So I'm gonna go look with that, look at that with him next week. We'll kind of see what we can, what can be done about that. The permanent yard sales that were discussed last meeting, those were, the zoning administrator sent a letter, police department contacted them, and I think the two that were mentioned, those were ended. I think one of them may come to council for a temporary activity permit in the future. And I did send out some information about Spring Hall Day and the commission minutes leading up to that. I think the NRBC is who I'd like to lean on for a recommendation going forward if we wanna do a dumpster, you know, rent a dumpster for a weekend, a couple dumpsters, let the community, any resident who wants to use them. So I'm looking forward to working with the NRBC for a recommendation. I'm still waiting for quotes from Republic for our Spring Hall, but we're gonna look at a couple different options. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff? Mr. Bachman.
Just again, thanks for the weekend, but fireworks, we approved them. But we apparently didn't approve what size they didn't explode, because holy smokes, I swear there's mortar rounds going off. I had debris on my roof in my hunting today, which I've never had before. And I don't know if there's a way to regulate how big the fireworks can be and how we would enforce it, or can we regulate when we allow these people to sell them in the city what they can sell? But I mean, there's literally six-inch tubes in people's front yards and they're blowing off what feels like dynamite. And I had a veteran call me, I had a lady with a handicapped kid calling me today, and I don't know how many dog owners are probably upset, but it's, it certainly has been an issue that we've probably all heard about today, so.
Yep, and I know it woke my son up and my dog didn't like him, so I'm not sure if we can regulate the size at all.
I don't think we can, but we can certainly research it and report back and see what we can do to regulate it. I gotta believe that we can limit the size of explosives going off in our city. I mean, we can define fireworks as X, Y, and Z rather than unlimited explosive power in our ordinance. I, George, if you could check.
I think there's, yeah, we can look into it. There are, you know, obviously when we adopted the ordinance, there are limitations the state imposes on what we can and cannot regulate. And most of it centers around the time and the days. We can check on the size. I'm not sure if we can or not, but we can check.
Back in the day, we're thinking about rockets and firecrackers. Now it's, it's big stuff. It's deadly stuff. There were two, two near, one deadly and one serious accident in Michigan over the weekend.
Something else we can do is just check with other communities to see what they're doing. I mean, we have like three, four fireworks stands in four miles in Manistee, so yeah, so we can check what other communities are doing.
Before they ask, I mean, I gotta believe other communities, especially ones that had the accidents, they're gonna be looking at what they're allowing.
Right.
To explode, so maybe we can just check into that if something can do with, thank you.
The ordinance says two days before and two days after, right?
I believe so.
I know the day before and the day after, you can't regulate that part. I can't remember if it's two.
You can only shoot them off on the 5th if it's on a Friday or Saturday, so it's very specific in the ordinance.
So it's today we still have some, basically?
You should, only the 5th if it, if it falls on a Friday or Saturday, I believe our ordinance says.
Yeah, I don't think it's two. I think it's one day before and one day after.
I think the issue we're talking about is, you know, the old, the old law used to be if it goes bang or goes in the air, it's illegal, right? So that pretty much squashed all the fireworks. Now they kind of opened the gates up back in 2017, or whatever it was, they opened the floodgates up. So we need to see if we can kind of regulate that for our city residents.
Oh, I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Beaton.
I gotta talk about the fireworks too. I have a 12-year-old dog, and she has never had a reaction to fireworks until this year and this past weekend. And she was traumatized by it. I, I just, I'm thinking that, I'm wondering if we can regulate it based on the size of the lot that they're being shot off of. I would like, the houses on the north side are so close together in some places, it's ridiculous. It was, it's been going off, they've been going off since the 29th.
But we can check into that as well. My guess is that we can't. But what we can regulate is they can't shoot off a firework where something lands on somebody else's property. That's a violation. We can, we could ticket that right now. Of course, you have to determine, be able to determine who sent it off and where it came from. But that, that clearly is not permitted. And so if a small lot, to be able to control it sufficiently where the firework is, is set off on that lot and, and stays on that lot, I think it's probably a pretty hard thing to do. So if it extends beyond their lot line, though, that is a violation.
It would give us a little bit relief between some of the houses that are really close together, because to be perfectly honest, I'm not sure that the people that are shooting them off are all the actual homeowners. We've got a lot of short-term rentals on the north side, so I think it's a problem that has been growing over the past few years. I'm done.
Yes. Mr. Pratt?
I just wanted to thank the city workers for their work. I guess, just to chime in a little bit on the fireworks thing, is there a way we can use that opportunity to educate people more in advance, I guess, next year? Because some people know what the ordinance is, some people don't know what the ordinance is. Some people are going down and using the Methodist Church parking lot to set their fireworks off, and I don't know if they got permission. So some of that might just be putting the word out there of what our expectations are and what the ordinance allows. I, I don't know. I just feel like sometimes it's, maybe some people are aware, but I think sometimes people just aren't aware and then it becomes a problem. So, yeah.
And I think the tax bill comes out, we could put that in there, and there's probably a couple different options we could use.
I've got the same thing as, like Linda's got some guy called me from Hughes, that his wife went out to talk to the people, they were shooting off the bombs. And she tried to talk to them and they were drinking and it wasn't a very good argument. And they were all hitting on his roof too, and they're hoping that they can get the junk off their metal roof today. That's one thing. Also, I'll be glad for the dumpsters around town, because I've been riding around, I see couches out there already, sitting on the curb, and they ain't even there to pick up day. It's really crazy that people don't follow the rules. What is this, we gotta discuss with the outsiders on the redevelopment lic- liquor relations bill?
Yeah, if they wanna get one of the DDA liquor license, we're looking at kind of past practice, how those were acquired. Those, there aren't, there isn't a limit. There's, I think, a regulation about how much development needs to be going on in the DDA, and it meets that requirement. So we're looking into what, what the next step is to help that along.
Can we phone somebody for our step shit, or?
So we're, I think we have another quote potentially coming in, Lucas, for, yeah, tomorrow. So we're gonna take a look at, at another quote. We had one for, I believe it was $19,000 for it. So then we had one we thought was significantly cheaper, and we're hoping to get one more, kind of more, a reasonable quote.
I hope they can get it done quicker. What are we gonna rent out the Marina open space now for $100?
Do you know what we call the price for the open space in the back? Or you're talking about the open space in the back?
Marina open space, it says $100.
Oh, in the staff meeting?
Yeah.
So that was a discussion about the deposit. It's significantly, a lot of, it's a lot of work to receive the deposit, then issue a check. So there was discussion about if that's gonna be mandated going forward.
I know Ed mentioned that it becomes administrative nightmare again.
Yep.
Yeah, I had brought that up, because we rent it, there's a rental fee and a deposit. And like when we rent it to somebody who's maybe just having a meeting and not having a party, is it necessary to charge them a security deposit or just the rental fee was what I had brought up at staff, just something to think about.
Okay, thank you.
Is there an update about the Hampton Inn?
I know they're working on, I don't have a specific open date yet. We do have the, the, I guess, the, the water main's gonna be, we're hoping to be directionally bored on July 14th. So that should be completed a couple days after that.
We were working with the construction firm Pioneer and the developers, obviously for the past two months, knowing that they were gonna have to vacate the large parking lot. So when I met with them early last week, or early this week, I guess, Monday, what they, they're, they're working on getting their certificate of occupancy. I don't know if that occurred. It was scheduled for Thursday, Friday last week. But then, once they received that from the building authority, then they said that they had one week where the Hampton officials would come in, set up all their IT stuff, and then train the staff, and then certify the building to be rented. I did see a post by them today that said that they are taking reservations, July 17th was the first one. So I, I think it's within the next week or two.
Because I thought they've been taking reservations all along.
They have, but, and this is just from the developers. When they set a target opening date, Hilton will give them, allow them to start taking reservations 60 days later than that. And then, as they meet milestones, then they back that up by 30 days. And so I think that 30-day hold was July 17th, and they fully expect to be open by then or before then.
I know we got a tour for a date.
Do you know, Jeff, with the last tour we went on, all the city lights, like I believe those were city light posts that are gonna be out there along the new sidewalk? Is that correct, or is that?
We installed new gray decorative lights, the same ones that are down First Street from the armory all the way down. So now there was six of them, six of them that go to the south, and they're on the east side. So they're basically are along the large parking lot by the, by the beach, and they go down to about the dog park.
All of those are all in?
Those are in, and what you'll see is the old poles from consumers are still there with the Cobra Lights. So we put a request in to have them removed, but right now we've actually got two sets.
Okay.
So.
Stay there, I got a question for you.
Okay.
And then I just wanted, I know that we ended our contract with Safe Belt. Is there anything we looked into, what we're gonna do after?
Yep, so we have a contract, the attorney reviewed for AGS, which does Manistee Township and also Cadillac. I also contacted the state to see the process for their, for having them do the, do the work as well. Where the building official job posting has been, is out there now. So we're kind of, so some things are in motion, but I'm hoping to have either the AGS or the state of Michigan on the, the agenda on the 18th of July.
Okay, so there's not gonna be a gap where there's nothing, there's no.
So Safe Belt's done August 23rd is the end of their, is the end of their time here. So yeah, we're trying to get that set up before then.
Mayor Sullivan, I got one more thing I forgot to say.
Sorry.
Sorry. I really wanna thank Little River Casino for the fireworks display that they give generously to the city to celebrate the Fourth of July. I've heard from many people telling me how spectacular it was. We have kind of a hiding spot over the north side where we watch them, so we didn't see all the ground ones, but I could tell that they were pretty nice. And lots of compliments from people on that side. So I wanna thank them for their generosity to the city. Thank you.
Okay, so I was up in Arcadia, and they have, I think it's on Lake Street, they have this little parking lot that has all these green dumpsters and a, and a camera, and it's immaculate. Like there is no garbage, no.
Like, there is no garbage, no nothing, and I don't know if that's something that we could look into, like, um, the NRBC look into, putting on, like, each side of the river for the city? I don't know, because I know that we have a problem with the, the recycling thing.
Actually, the city doesn't have a problem. We check that regularly, and we, we have very little abuse with the co-mingle dumpster. Um, ninety-nine percent of the issues that happen there are with the, the cardboard, um, trailer that is run by the school volunteers. And, um, as, if you remember, just a couple months ago, council approved an updated agreement with Manistee Catholic Central. They've received a grant and are gonna relocate that out to Twelfth Street, uh, just kind of below the hill, and build a new building and some new enclosures, and they're hoping that that, um, having it more exposed and visible to everybody, um, and Mr. Grabowski will keep an eye on it, I'm sure, but they're hoping that that deters a lot of that abuse.
So would it be beneficial to look into? I don't know what they are. They're like a weird lime green type thing, but it's reci, it has like everything different. Like, you could do glass, you could do cardboard, you could do, um.
I'll have to, I'll take a look at that.
Okay, yeah, I took a picture of it, I just don't know what it is, but.
Okay.
I mean, if it's something that we could look into and just see how much it is, we would put it on the agenda for the NRBC and have one on the north side and.
Yeah, the, the green ones, it's, I can't remember the three letters, it's something for life, GFL.
Yeah.
Um, it's.
Green for life.
Green for life is what it stands for, and all their stuff is bright green. So that's a different vendor. We use Republic. Republic collects our co-mingled, and then they sell that, um, they take it downstate and sell it to a, a separate, uh, a separate group, so that's why it's not separated out.
Okay.
But.
Okay.
Jeff, did you see that report on TV where they said a lot of that plastic and that wasn't getting burned up or nothing? They would dump them at some place.
Well, and that's why Republic, uh, maybe three years ago stopped collecting the glass, because there was no secondary market to purchase the glass, and, and what I found out in that process is Republic actually took that gra, glass, crushed it, and used it to build roads in the landfill, so it ended up in the road, in the landfill, but it replaced aggregates that they had been using or, or fly ash and stuff from different plants. But even now that, that stream was too great for them to collect, it's also the heaviest to transport. Um, so that's not available to us because there's no secondary market right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
So you're in part considering.